Called the board of the town of New Windsor's Town Council meeting for January 2nd, 2025. If everyone would rise with me and join in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under thy invisible liberty and justice for all.
Our meetings go by an agenda. And they are recorded electronically. Anyone wishing to have something on the agenda for discussion by the council should have had it to the town hall by 3:00 the previous Wednesday of the month, previous month. Anyone wishing to speak tonight, they have to sign up over there by our town attorney. Approval of minutes from December 4th, Town Council meeting. They've been emailed out to everybody. Motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve the meetings from our, from December. Meeting minutes from December.
Second. We have a motion second to approve the minutes from the December 4th, 2024 Town Council meeting. All those in favor, saying fine by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so carry. Mayor's report, attended a lot of meetings, a lot of events this past month. Attended the Reefs Across America event at Babylon Vault when they, they arrived from up north on December 3rd. Met, that same day I met with Hanky's Radio for them to adjust the fire siren for the last time. It's now three cycles and the cycles have been shortened. Attended the Town Council meeting with our shadows. Met with town staff on December 6th. Attended the Fire Department's Christmas party. Attended the National Reefs Across America ceremony, ceremony at Pipe Creek Cemetery. Attended the town Christmas tree lighting. Attended the Fire Department's monthly meeting. Attended the MML chapter, Carroll chapter dinner. Attended the town Christmas breakfast. Helped at the Fire Department bingo. Attended Lions Club meeting. Met with Lowe's manager on December 12th to request assistance with the rescue of residents project. Received an email on December 27th that corporate, Lowe's corporate will be contacting me within the next four weeks to get set up in their database. So more about that as I, as I learn about it. Attended the town work session. Received official notification from the Department of Housing and Community Development that we are receiving $250,000 towards the rescue of residents project. Contacted Cindy Stone at the Department of Housing and Community Development to see about additional funding. I feel that with two projects at the Dealman Inn, we've turned back over $200,000 with those two grants. And, you know, and maybe in good faith that if additional funds come in from other projects, that we'd be first in line to receive some funding. Met with town manager Di and Circuit Rider Reynolds to discuss the rescue of residents project. Contacted Maryland State Highway Administration to get an update on the streetscape progress. Meetings, meetings should start again soon and I've requested that we be notified so that we can attend virtually. Checked with the Fire Department for the availability of Windsor Station for the next MML chapter dinner, which we'll be hosting, which right now I'm shooting for Wednesday, March 19th. Met with the Fire Department Board Directors before I came here tonight to discuss the rescue of residents project that we'll be talking about in closed session about a MOU or lease agreement. Upcoming meetings, the Vietnam Memorial Wall Community Meeting on January 9th and Board of Carroll County Commissioners Reception on January 16th. And that is my report. Council committees, community enhancement, Councilwoman Schultz.
Says it's vacant.
Yeah, I know.
So I attended the council meeting and the Christmas tree lighting and the work session and the HSP Executive Committee and the MML quarterly meeting. We had our Christmas tree lighting on Sunday, the 8th of December, and I want to thank all the public work staff who took the time to decorate the town and the park. And then, of course, our office staff who did on the setup of the cookies and the hot chocolate and activities for the children. Thank you, Kim and Dana. And thanks for, to the choir at St. Paul Church for providing music for the event and to Santa Claus, who lit the tree and visited with residents and then had to rush off to ride the fire truck. It was a very busy night for him. The downtown shop small passport program ended. I, only thing I know is that they did distribute, well, called the winners of the gift cards on December 13th, but I emailed a couple of people to get the other details about how many there were and everybody's on vacation. So get that next month. Just a couple of reminders. One is that we have information about the Human Services Program or HSP of Carroll County in the town office. And you can call them directly at 410-857-2999 to get assistance with utilities. With the cold weather upon us, we may have residents who need that and they also have a lot of other important services. And just a contact reminder that the best way to contact the town is to call or email. Messages and comments on Facebook may get seen, they may not get seen because the page is not monitored all the time. So we don't want anybody's concern or question to get missed. So please call or email and the phone number is 410-635-6575. And the email's info@new windsormarylandandmarylandismd.org. Of course, that information's all on the website. That's it.
Thank you. Public Works, Councilman Huffman.
Good evening, everyone. Public Works had New Windsor looking its best for the holiday season. Set up, they set up and decorated the Christmas tree in Fountain Park as well as decorated the town parks, ensuring they looked festive. They performed some restoration, restoration work on the sleigh in Fountain Park. And I think it was a visually appealing addition to the park. Well deserved thank you goes out to the Public Works Department. Public Works installed the wreaths on the utility poles prior to the holiday. Many of the LED bulbs on the wreaths had to be replaced this year. It's a bit disappointing since the expectation is that those LED bulbs should have lasted a lot longer than the old incandescent type bulbs. So I'm not sure what went on with that, but they had to order some bulbs and I think they had some problems with the ones that came in. They're going to have to order some more, so we'll monitor that situation in the future. Public Works has continued to use the street sweeper to ensure the curbs and gutters remain free of debris that could clog the stormwater drains. Public Works also winterized the facilities at Lions Park to minimize ill effects from the cold weather. And Public Works reinstalled the street sign at Lambert Avenue that was knocked down. They replaced the stop sign at Vista Court in Atlee Ridge that was knocked on and ran over. And they installed a new stop sign at Maple Avenue and Pilsen Drive. I know a year or so ago I was reporting on street signs and stop signs like every meeting. I hope we don't fall back into that, but right now they're all up, so we'll see how that goes. And lastly, Public Works has all their vehicles ready for winter plowing if the need arises. So everybody, they're prepared. The Planning Commission, we did meet in December. We welcomed the new Carroll County Planner Javier Toro to our group. He's new to Carroll County and will be supporting New Windsor. We received a presentation from the Hoff Project Team requesting the Beecham Farm property to be included in the growth area. Boundary reflected in the comprehensive plan. They, they had some large maps and some other visual aids that I collected and we have them here in the, in the town hall. So if anyone needs to look at those, you can certainly do that. Our next scheduled meeting for the Planning Commission is Monday, January 27th at 6:00 PM. And like those that, that spoke in front of me, I attended council meetings and Planning Commission scheduled meetings. I attended the MML quarterly meeting and dinner and attended the town holiday breakfast.
Thank you. Order and serve, Councilman Hoff.
All right, so as most are usually winding down for the holiday season, Public Works, as Councilman Huffman has been reporting, has been winding up. So from one large water sewer project to the next, they're now moving on to the Blue Ridge Pump Station replacement, which the generator pad has been poured and some site work has been completed. You might have also seen trucks out on Church Street. They've been working some sewer breaks that they found, they located using the sewer cameras. And they've also got pricing for sewer lines, sewer lining that they'll be reporting on in upcoming meeting. That's my report.
Thank you. Public Safety and Health, Councilman Cornet.
Good evening and Happy New Year to our citizens of New Windsor. I attended the meeting, I attended several meetings or events this holiday season. There was no opioid prevention coalition meeting for December. But I did attend the New Windsor Fire Company Christmas Dinner, the New Windsor Christmas Tree Lighting, like others have mentioned, the quarterly MML meeting in December in Hampstead, Town of New Windsor Christmas Breakfast and National Reefs Across America at Pipe Creek Church. There is an upcoming opioid coalition meeting on January 8th, next Wednesday. And then there's also a meeting the next day for the Vietnam Traveling Memorial, which I encourage any citizen who would like to participate in the traveling memorial wall, which will be in October of next year, which is quickly approaching. That meeting is January 9th at 6:00 PM at the VW, VFW Post 88, 8806 in Union Bridge. That meeting is at 6:00 PM. And then there's also a Carroll County Commissioners Reception, which I plan to attend. It's a reception at, they've actually had it the last several years. It'll be at the Carroll County Office Building Room 3 on January 23rd. I need to RSVP for that, so I made a reminder. Did I say next year? Dear God. So I'm, I'm still in 2024, but it is this year, this October. And those are our meetings, meeting minutes or notes. One thing I was going to say, at the MML meeting, the mayor of Union Bridge, Mr. Jones, Perry Jones, mentioned that we should work on an emergency evacuation plan. I guess he meant for residents. I, I will make this notice that if you do not have a, an emergency evacuation plan for your own residence, in the case of a fire, it'd be a good idea to plan that or prepare that. It's not something that anybody wants to look forward to, but it is something that would certainly benefit a family if they did not have at least an idea. And that's all I have. One last thing, wanted to thank the Fire Department for their annual efforts of escorting Santa throughout the community. There were, it wasn't, the weather wasn't beautiful for the day that they came through Blue Ridge Manor, but it was beautiful to see Santa Claus do that. And I, I know that it takes a lot of cooperation, coordination to do that. So I know everybody feels the same way about it, but they, obviously our fire company does an awesome job. So I wanted to give them a shout out on behalf of my lovely wife. So, and myself too, so.
And the community appreciates it because it's, it's not a fundraiser, but they get several donations for, for Santa Claus coming around.
Well, certainly that is well deserved. Santa Claus is a great guy.
Economic Development, Councilman Frog.
Good evening. Thank you for New Windsor Fire Department for bringing Santa along. My two girls loved it and I'm sure every other kid in town enjoyed it as well. I attended the council meeting on 12/4, attended the Christmas tree lighting on 12/8, the MML dinner on 12/12. Thank you Hampstead and Sheriff Deweze for speaking. Attended the town Christmas breakfast on the 14th, the work session on the 16th. I met with town manager Di on the 20th. I'm scheduled to meet with him again the week of the 7th. And we are still exploring grants for a couple 2025, 2026 projects. If there's any leads, then I will bring that information to the council and the town. That's it.
Thank you. Town managers' report I have here. Fiscal year 26 budget, budget process and preparation has started. Will begin staff meetings in January and begin discussion with mayor and council, starting with the January 21st work session. If any council or staff has specific recommendations or questions, feel free to contact me to discuss or schedule a meeting if necessary. And kind of tag along on that, Councilman Huffman, any other signs, street signs, stop signs? If you go out and about the town, see whether or not we can get a budget for.
Some cement fortifications.
That, that too. Blue Ridge Pump Station upgrade, if anybody's been out 31 has seen a project started. Project is finally underway. Johnston Construction mobilized on December 16th and has been doing general site work, including sediment control, grading, fence removal, paving removal, framing for generator, concrete pad, et cetera. Generator, concrete pad is scheduled to be poured today. Pump station is scheduled for delivery mid-February. Staffing and public works restructuring need decision and direction from mayor and council on moving forward with public works restructuring. On the, by the 5th, I guess that is, 5th?
That's the 5th, public works position.
That's the public works position, I think that.
Yeah, 5th public works position, thank you. Part-time reception is in Kim's promotion. In addition to the job descriptions, Clerk Treasurer Magnus sent 1216 and 1217. Town manager Di sent additional documents and information to mayor and council on 1217, asking to let him know if any additional information is needed by 1231. Town manager did not receive any requests. Town manager is aware this is going to close session tonight and he is hoping to get direction from town council. Need to move this off-center so we can advertise for the positions. And then upcoming meetings, Tuesday, January 21st, the 2025 work session due to the holiday. Moved back, moved over a day. Wednesday, February 5th is the Town Council meeting and then Tuesday, February 18th because of President's Day. Been moved to for the work session. And that's his report. Public Works Director, we have a report? No report? Community Deputy?
All right, good evening, everyone. Hope everyone had a safe holiday and continues to be safe. Between December 4th and January 2nd, 2025, between December 4th, 2024, I stand corrected, and December, and January 2nd, 2025, the Carroll County Sheriff's Office logged 20, or 32 occurrences, including calls for service, property checks and traffic stops within the town of New Windsor. Out of those four occurrences, out of those occurrences, four were found to be reportable. On 12/12/24 at 3:07 PM, deputies responded to a vehicle collision at New Windsor Road and Tibbetts Lane. The driver of the striking vehicle was found to be driving without a license and driving on expired tags and citations were issued. And I wonder why insurance rates are going up. On 12/24/24 at 6:52 AM, an assault was reported on the 300 block of Main Street. The alleged suspect was asked to leave the residence at the time and the suspect complied. Later, the suspect re-entered the residence by kicking in a door and slapped the victim on the face before leaving a second time. And this case is open for further investigation. On 12/29/24 at 1:58 AM, an assault was reported at the 100 block of Main Street. The victim, who was a patron at the location, was in a physical altercation while attempting to leave from the patio area. This resulted in multiple injuries to the victim who advised several individuals assaulted him after he made a comment. This case is also open for further investigation. On 12/31/24 at 10:55 PM, a routine patrol stop initiated traffic stop resulted at Main Street and Old New Windsor Road resulted in the driver not having a license and citations were issued for that. As far as reportable calls, that's it. That concludes my report for this month.
Thank you. Fire Chief, he's at the board meeting that I was at earlier. Just to let everybody know that in two weeks, on Thursday, January 16th at 7:00 AM, the EMS personnel, there will be two EMS personnel and one driver that will start and they will be Carroll County employees. They no longer will be New Windsor Fire Department employees. But I would just want to commend Chief Crimer and there's been others that have been part of this transition period. But it's, it's been challenging in some ways and he's done an outstanding job for our community. And then also want to commend Tomco, who oversaw the paid personnel that were with, paid through New Windsor Fire Department. Also his dad, who oversaw payroll for many years and then Ed Pauls Grove took that over after Jack passed away. So there's a lot of people that need to be commended for, for providing EMS here in, in New Windsor for many, many years. Treasurer's Report?
All right, I'm December 20th, that's time we have officially fore and we have officially purchased 1321 New Windsor Road. The grand total with these, everything was $86,786.45, which is under the limit that I was authorized to do. I currently have the mid-year budget completed and ready for review. I do have a couple of questions to town manager, so we'll do that in the work session. And I am wrapping up the 2024 year. 72's will be in the mail soon.
All right. Thank you. Order and serve, billing clerk.
All I have this time is newsletters should be in homes now. They were sent on the 30th, email version was the 27th. And water bills because of the holiday and upcoming snow. I'm looking to mail them no later than the 10th. Quite possibly could be that early the following week because of the snow. Before, before my part, so yeah, but that's all I've got.
Thank you. Anything from code enforcement?
Nothing given to us.
Lehigh update, nothing? Anybody have any new business? Old business, residents concerned? Give the microphone.
It doesn't work, she'll have to go over there.
Come over this channel direction. That'll pick it up.
Say your name and address, please.
I am Sharon Gribbin Lindeman and I live at 208 Main Street. And, you know, I guess I didn't realize I should have maybe put this in writing a week ago so that you have an idea what I was, wanted to ask about. But I guess my concern is more with the streetscape that's going to go on after the road is all fixed, while all of the water pipes are done. And whether or not there's going to be a committee that includes of the residents. Cause if there is, I would like to be a part of that if I could, because I have a lot of concerns like the trees and the sidewalk and the lighting. And I know some of that stuff has been decided before and probably some of those things that were decided long ago aren't even there anymore. You know, styles of lighting change over the years and things like that. And I did have a little taste of all that when I was on the town council, looking into all that kind of stuff. So I feel like I could add a lot to a committee if you have one and, and I think it would, I would really like to know what's happening or have some sort of a little update on what's the timeline maybe and that kind of thing, you know, what are we thinking about?
There is already a task force, Streetscape Task Force. We'll have to review that, but right now they're apparently at 90% completion. How long it's going to take to get the other 10%, I don't know. They've been really dragging their feet on it. There's no funding for construction. So I've been sending emails and talking to people as much as I can. But everybody knows what shape the state is in. I think a five, six million dollar project on a state level is a small project. You know, in the very beginning, when we started this back up in 2014, for many years we were told, and I understand that there's no guarantee, but they always said there would be no problem with the funding. And now there is a problem with the funding.
So you're saying that they're going to just do the pipes and then they're not going to do the streetscape?
Oh, they're going to do the streetscape.
Okay. But.
We did the pipes.
So I guess I'm confused then. So when are they going to start this?
The original understanding or agreement was that the town, and this is everywhere, had to either upgrade or replace sewer and water lines before they would come in. Due to the fact that if they came in and then we replaced it or something broke, then they would have to tear it up. More most likely, I don't care what type of proj, project you have, once it's done and they come in and blacktop everything, something is going to break within probably the first or second year. But once we get done our water replacement project and we already lined the sewer lines many years ago, then our responsibility for streetscape is completed. And that's when state highway comes in and does, they will do all new sidewalks, all new curbing, all, all it will be ADA compliant. The ramps and everything, bump outs, the trees, the lighting. And probably the lighting, since we have agreed, what we were talking about, 60 lights? Something like that. Now, whether or not the lighting has improved, that they can be farther apart, I don't know. Could be less, but we have, right now, there was like 60 pedestrian lighting and that was 50%. The purchase was 50% state, 50% town. The wiring and everything, the infrastructure would be new on the state highway administration. So we, we've met with them, we met with them right before the, what they call the MDOT tour. And we were told everything was good to go. And then the meetings, progress meetings stopped because they didn't have a federal agreement for funding of the progress meetings and everything. So we were, it's been installed for several months now and I just emailed the other day. And the agreement has been signed so that now they can go forward with the meetings and they'll be virtual. I asked for them to be in person. I just think there are better meetings in person, but at least we'll be at the table because probably for a couple of years, we weren't even at the table when they were having these progress meetings. So we'll, we'll, and plus we'll also have a public information meeting at some point when it gets to be 100%. And like we did in the very beginning, we'll have state highway come out and they'll have different tables to discuss trees, sidewalks. What else? Whatever, everything that is there and then we'll have open discussion and go from there.
Street signs, parking.
Right. Well, that sounds good, you know. I, I know that, is there going to be any citizen input is with the state highway or?
Yeah, the task force is made up of council, staff and citizens. I can't tell you who's on that right now because I haven't, we haven't really gotten to the point where we would sit down with 100%, you know, and then say, here, here's what they're offering. I mean, we've already changed some things down here. I don't know what the address is across from you, would be about what?
3.
3, 307, 305.
Yeah, I think it is 307. The former garage, they wanted to take all of his parking out front. Well, that, that's unacceptable. So we changed that. I, I demanded basically that we put aside, where they put a sidewalk down from the 400 block of Main Street down to 711. And they didn't want to do that. They came up with all these reasons and I'm like, no, we want it in there. It doesn't make sense to have people walk across Main Street over to the Blue Ridge Avenue. Then come down, go down the end of the street and then cross state highway twice. Doesn't, doesn't make sense. It's a safety enhancement project, do it right when you're doing it. And now they're putting that in. So that's, that's been a little bump in the road, but you know, if nothing else, you put a retaining wall because they said about the grade. Well, there is a grade there, but you fill it in, put a retaining wall there and you're done with it. So we, we, there's been many things that we said we, we don't like and do want. They took out the retaining walls down at the 400 block of High Street and 400 block of Main Street. And probably maybe, you know, I don't know whether you would get a retaining wall or not, but you're, you're elevated a little bit, so. And they didn't want to do any of that. And all they want to do is put sidewalks in and paving. And if we allowed that, then we would not see them probably for another 40, 50 years. So that's why I want the retaining walls so that people don't have to mow out in the street. I mean, that's, while we're doing it, do it right.
I agree. So are any of those meetings that are online, are they going to be open up that we can get online to see them too or?
I don't know about that.
Okay.
Probably not. That, that's a state meeting, I don't know.
So all of this is run by the state?
Yeah.
Okay, because I was wondering why you're referring to them and I think we would all, apart from, but not, but so.
The state highway is funding the project.
Well, I think that, as you've already pointed out, mayor, but just in case people didn't hear this, the, the town has done everything that it was supposed to do all along. And the holdup on this project has been the state all along. So it's not because the town hasn't done what it needed to do, so, you know.
I know that from when I was here too. But I know we walked the town so many times with the state highway and, you know.
It was a dough, I did that too. It's like 30 years, Linda. It's like 30 years, yeah, I know.
Put our time in.
Yes, we have.
So that's where we are right now.
Keep you posted.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
I believe it is Ms. Linda, if you have anything to add.
Well, why don't you come?
Well, why don't you come over here, so.
Name and address.
The people online won't hear you if you don't do it.
Linda Cavanagh, I live at one thirty-one Church Street. And I was concerned about the, the traffic in, in the town, especially near my house. It's, it's really, very dangerous. And even though we have to wait for all this, a long time for streetscape, there, there could be lines that say this is where the pedestrians walk. They're kind of, they're gone now from, because of the, the work that's been done out there. And I'm afraid someone's gonna get injured. And also, there's, my husband complains about it all the time, on Main Street, where there's a little sign, a small sign that says traffic is.
Traffic does not stop.
Does not stop. And it's very small. Could it be made larger? We're just afraid that, that we have, there's many incidences up there, and I don't know. Maybe you all talk about this all the time.
Do you mean the, in front of the church, Linda, like the downside? Okay.
People, they don't stop, or they, they don't realize people are not gonna stop. So I, do you all talk about this in, in other meetings, or?
That's probably on the town street, right?
Church Street.
No, but I mean, there's, I think, I think she means down at Main.
No, that, that's right there.
I mean, right here.
It's, it's from when, remember, it used to be, before they put that bypass there, and there used to be stop signs on.
Yeah, that's what I mean, I'm talking about over here.
Now, there's a little sign that says, from the other side, does not stop.
So that the people that are coming up from where you live, see that sign?
Oh, we have a stop sign. It, it's from, it's, it's just from, because there's so many people that still stop there as if there was a stop sign, and when they put the bypass there, it's basically to tell them, keep on going, you don't have to stop.
This is on the state highway.
Right.
Okay.
It's a state highway.
You can ask them about it, that's a state highway.
I'm just concerned because I've almost been hit a number of times, and I try to be very careful, and I wear a vest, and stuff. So I, there's other people walking here, it's, it's really a bad spot.
That when they finally do it, they put a good crosswalk out in front of them.
And, and also with Sharon, I would like to be a part of the streetscape if, if they let people be a part of it, so. It's our town, and we want it all to look nice and be a part of. And, you know, especially I would like to have trees that enhance everything, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Any announcements? Heritage Committee, have anything coming up?
No, not, not anything in the very near future, no. Not till it gets warm.
Line Club, reading is when?
Yeah, just one second.
Fire Department Bingo every Tuesday night.
The eleventh at ten AM is the Lines for Literacy Reading.
Bring your kids or grandchildren out. Usually very worthwhile. All right, do I hear a motion to move to close session per general provisions? Article three dash three zero five, B one and B seven, discussion of staffing, consult with council to obtain legal advice, MOU with the fire company. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
In favor, sing if I'm gonna sing, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, so carry. Thank you.